Hey friends, alright, so good evening, today is July 17th and it's about 6:04 or 5. And today is the committee of the whole meeting for the Grotton Board of Education. So that is called the order, the first order business is the review, is Joan up for being today?
I was gonna say some.
No, she, she had a little medical thing happen, so she's not in, but she'll get the video of this. You'll call. Okay, so, so people to, to hear that is that Joan, who is essentially the clerk for the board, is not with us tonight, but she will take the, she'll get the recording and send off a minute from that. Alright, okay, and however, in her, so could she always make sure, I, I do this, is I will take a motion for acceptance of the June 12th, 2003 meeting minutes, can I have a second? I got Liz. Is there a discussion? Actually, that's the first time, a second. Liz, yeah, thank you Matthew, I got a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of, of the meeting minutes of June 12th, 2003, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain, motion has carried. Um, so Joan, just for your knowledge, Beth has outed some guests, Jay Whitehead has become, has gotten ill. Um, and I believe Dr. William Porgan is out of the country at the present moment. Um, so I just wanted that to be in the record, the rest was present. Um, so let me just kind of, before we get into our agenda number three, is just to kind of walk you guys through what I, what I'm hoping is gonna happen tonight. Um, we have, um, we have, after the hard work of Matthew and his team, um, come up with the communication plan. And so we have received this numerous sites and, but just a great piece of work that you guys have done. And so you'll be presenting it to the board to ask questions and get clarification, so that we can vote on the communication plan next week, um, so that it could be a, a thing. Um, and then, um, I was actually thinking the discussion reflection, which I could give you here, top 10 was actually gonna go into the second meeting, but I see that it's here, Joyce and I just, Joyce was very diligent in getting a hold of me, I just wasn't there. But we will do your, your little bit reflection, and then because I, we are going to be going into executive session for the superintendent evaluation, it has to be a regular board meeting, it can't be just on the committee of the whole, can't be a working meeting. And so we have, I'm gonna close out this committee of the whole, once we hear Susan. Um, we will then, I will then call to order a regular, a special meeting, regular Board of Ed. And then we will go, do the motion into executives, I think, for purposes of talking about, um, Susan's evaluation, or excuse me, superintendent evaluation. So that's, that's the lay of the land, and that's why we have two separate meetings, that's why you receive two separate events. Just wanted to clarify, because it gets kind of confusing, I'm just trying to follow F O I laws. So without further ado, um, the other things I asked Susan to do until we find a, a tire lead for the principal of the high school, um, I've asked that for every agenda topic or for every meeting, even if it's a little bit redundant, that we kind of keep that in, in our news specifically. My guess is as time goes, things are gonna move pretty quickly, and this is just a way for the board to stay in. Rita, I don't think that you have, have this.
It was sent out to the board, I just copied that one.
What is it? The timeline of the Fitch High School.
Um, if she sent it out, I have it.
Okay.
Do you have extra copies?
So just to, I was able to sit with my team and, and get briefed today, Phil did a terrific job last week, in my stead, so that I could go and enjoy the family. I put that in notes, um, and he briefed me on some of the things that they had already accomplished. We actually did call Mary Broderick, um, who really pulled this thing together in a heartbeat. I really have to commend her, because she was able to put together the survey, get the focus groups organized, you know, um, really put together the, um, you know, help with the posting of what we're looking for in, you know, a principal for our flagship pitch. And so a lot of the things that you see happening in mid-July have really been accomplished. So her first gathering of the timeline, um, we will be doing the profile once she gathers all the information from the focus groups, and one of those focus groups is going to be with the Board of Ed. And so we had discussed two possible dates for the board, she can do July 31st and also, or July 1st. And July 24th, if you wanted to come to a meeting prior. And I talked to Joyce about this, and it can be considered a non-meeting, if it's just a focus group, for you all to talk, um, she said that would be fine, we could do it right before one of your existing meetings, or it could go on a non-meeting day, which is July 31st, would be that Monday.
We didn't wanna push it too far.
Beyond that.
Yeah.
Um, couple of problems with the 24th is that we, we do have a communications meeting before the board meeting, which we could push, and also.
It would be like 5 o'clock or 5:15, and that might be early for people.
And it would be at the town, and it could be a combination room in person.
Mary said she could come in person, do the focus group, or she could Zoom, we could have it on both ways. You know, it's just what, what works best for the board. How about, one of the things I can do is tomorrow Susan and I are gonna be going over the agenda for next week. And if it looks like it's a rather light agenda, maybe we could try to have it, um, next week, just so that we can get the, we can get it done, and we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that. Um, how does that feel for people?
Kim, maybe about 7 o'clock? Have it like part of our meeting. Well, like we do, like we're doing tonight, rather than try to come early. I know I can't make it on the 24th early, but.
Okay, but, um, but maybe what we could do is Susan and I could really look at our meeting, and maybe we could make it an hour, a regular meeting, if there isn't a lot, I don't, I, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking about what we have, and maybe we could just do it at 7, to your point. Like, I, I would prefer it not to be, um, a, a long beforehand, it, it would be harder for me, the, the next week would be fine, but it, it hard, it's harder for me. So let's, let me work that out, if not, uh, maybe she could do a full remote on the 31st for 15, 20 minutes, just to have us kind of come together. Um, so it's on our regular Monday meetings, it's the fifth Monday, um, so I will, I will see. With each of the focus groups, I think she's looking at about 45 minutes, and she's gonna be meeting with the teachers, she's gonna meet with non-serviced staff, the administration, um, and she really wants to listen, and students, and parents, community, so she, she will be the 25th and the 26th, she's really running through several focus groups each day.
I, I'll interrupt with that, the email that I shared and that was sent out last week was, um, the focus group was on that, and it does list the time, and it's a, it's a Zoom link, but again, it's denoted which group or links. We could see who's involved.
So that, I think those are really, that and the survey, we already have 100 responses on the survey. I'm gonna be sending out messages with my voice on our new parent square, you'll be very proud, I'm trying it out. And I'm gonna send it to specific groups with the link, so that they, and encouraging people to please participate. Because I think that this is really one of the major facets of having Kate's support, is to listen to our community on what they are expecting from a leader at the high school. I think that's so critical, I think it's really critical that our board is able to be part of this and have their own say. Because you, you know from an inside and outside view, exactly what we're, what. Well, we can absolutely, I'd send out my, my board notes, my everybody notes, weekly updates, and I can certainly send it out like that, so that.
There is a message for them, well, at least do the survey, Matthew, because my husband pulled out the survey. So we need out there, whether they're in the focus group, but they definitely, everyone seems to be happy.
They can join the community group.
And we're gonna also put it on the website, and we're gonna get it on the Facebook page. So the more information we can collect, I think the better idea we're gonna have, what the ones.
Kim?
Yes, Rita.
I'm just gonna reiterate again what I said last week, if we don't have a lot of responses, and, and also because it's a summer, having parents, you know, I really want the input of parents in the community. I, I would wait and have a interim principal, and make sure we make the right choices this time. That's my feeling, so I just wanna put it out there, it's, it's tough to do a search in the, in the summer like this, for such an important position.
Yep. That's a, that's a point, and you, and you, you said it very eloquently last week and this week, so I hear you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, any other questions, so we can move on? Alright, so, yay. Once again, I'm just thrilled about the work that has been done, Liz, I just wanted to know, is there, have, have you received any applicants?
We have.
Six so far. And it's posting is, goes all the way till August 7th. Right.
There was a question raised about whether we were going to be on any connected.
We are, we had someone from Utah. Yes, it's a national search, it's a national search.
I couldn't hear Matthew's question.
So Ma- Matthew wanted to make sure that it was above, um, was it beyond the cave search, which was another thing, I think that we had talked about, and, um, so Utah was one of the applicants. And Matthew's response was, I think, we thought that it was just a suburban, suburb of Grotton, so he wasn't quite sure, we didn't let that count. Alright, if we have no further comments, I am going to move on to the communication plan, and Matthew?
Well, uh, last month's communication committee meeting adopted a strategic communication plan, it's 23, 24. The specifics of the board, I'm, I'm reading this because this is for the benefit of citizens who may not be familiar with the process or what it's time to do, so, for those of you who've worked with it, and have done these, get, uh, the plan was submitted to the full board in its regular June meeting, and thereafter distributed to all board members for a new fire to tonight's discussion, are you hearing me read it? As articulated in our committee statement of purpose, our principal function is to fully strengthen positive, interactive relationships with our entire community, internal and external audiences about Grotton Public Schools. To help frame tonight's discussion for the listening viewing public, the five key elements of the strategic plan include, one, a concise statement of the communication committee's vision for fostering awareness of our district's mission, educational opportunities and support functions available to our students, and the work being done by the board, administration, and staff to attain the goals. Two, presentation of the committee communication committee's guiding principles, upon which annual communication goals will be set, to support and align with the board and superintendent's goals. Three, an inventory of internal and external stakeholders that communication strategies should strive to inform in an interactive fashion that encourages stakeholder feedback. Four, a directory of communication methods and tools. And five, specific communication strategies to achieve Grotton Public Schools' mission and the committee's guiding principles to both enhance stakeholder engagement and improve internal and external communications. Before opening the process of our discussion, I'd like to recognize fellow committee members Elizabeth Porter and Dr. William Porgan, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Phil Piazza, and the District's Communication Specialist Rebecca Bayes, without whom I would have suffered. Finally, a tip of the hat to former committee chair Katrina Fitzjoe, who helped conceptualize lunch this effort, and for us open the discussion.
I, I think what would be helpful is, um, just to kind of, I, I would prefer you not to read from the document, but just to kind of talk about the plan, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, and I agree, you know, we definitely don't wanna go page by page in mine by law, but I think, um, looking at the five strategies which begin on page 10, are really the key elements of the plan, and what we, uh, what we think the focus should be for the district. Um, and these have been spoken in different, different ways, so just to be clear, and I will read these just because it'll help sort of move the conversation along. You know, the first strategy on page 10 talks about engaging the community, and just understanding the mission of the school. Um, and be, um, you know, really work on being transparent and robust in both internal and external communications. Um, we can, and we'll, we'll talk about the different ways that we're gonna do that. A strategy two, again, things that we're, we're already doing, but we wanna improve a ton of promoting the achievements and the improvements and the initiatives that are going on in our schools, and that's to families, students, staff, and the general community. Uh, strategy three, uh, talks about really allocating personnel and resources to do this, and we have, um, Rebecca, she will lead the way in many of these efforts, and she'll be sort of the guide for our principals and our school personnel in helping improve the different aspects of this plan. Um, strategy four, talks about gathering feedback, again, we do, uh, we do that, you know, at least once a year, but we'll, we'll look at how we gather feedback throughout the year to improve, um, not only communications within the district, but the district as a whole. Um, and finally, um, strategy five, talks about being, you know, proactively planning, you know, in the, for the case, uh, how we communicate during, during a case of emergency or crisis. Again, something that we do internally, we have our school safety plan, but making sure that the community understands that we have these plans in place, not necessarily sharing those plans, but assuring them of the safety of the, the students and us. So those were, those were the, the five key strategies that I believe will, will guide the work of the district. Um, we've talked about the role of the communications committee moving forward, um, would be to monitor this work and to help facilitate this work. Those were really the highlights.
So yeah, the five strategies, I think really we felt like much of the work within communication would fall tactically underneath one of those strategies for the most part. And really help us engage further with our entire community, uh, and showcase what's happening in our schools. We talked about initiatives, but the challenges would fall under initiatives as well, you know, positive initiatives and how we're addressing challenges. Or negative and positive initiatives.
Yeah, the plan itself lists actions and different tactics that we will go about to, to achieve, you know, to move these strategies forward, and obviously those will be something that we'll continue to add to, and different things will come into our, you know, purview, but you know, a lot of these where we've already started, obviously with our social media presence, and we'll see where, you know, where that takes us in the future. The parent square is another area that, that, you know, sort of coincided with the, you know, the start of this committee as well, so.
Yeah, our last communication plan was, our comprehensive communication plan was 2016. That was when there was an ad hoc communication committee, that's actually when I first joined the district on a very small level, and certainly since 2015, we've had a tremendous number of shifts when it comes to communication, um, new platforms, um, all sorts of new ways to communicate, but the ways we like to communicate have actually have changed drastically, particularly with COVID. Um, and as we now come out of COVID, see what's gonna stick, and what people wanna get back to. They wanna get back to in-person events and community, and what does that look like? When is that appropriate, and when do we wanna keep more of the digital presence? And something that I talk about a lot with principals and the school staff, particularly as we prepare to launch Parent Square and the website, is we have a very diverse community here, we have a very diverse community ethically, a very diverse community socio-economically, but the one thing that most people are very sophisticated about is their media consumption, and how they like to get information. Um, most people have some sort of smart device, and are consuming media and information on a daily basis in a very sophisticated way, um, and that I feel like is, is across the board for the most part. Um, so we definitely feel there's room and need to elevate how we're doing things with the district, to meet how our families want to take information.
I'm gonna recognize Rita.
Oh, I just wanted to commend the communications committee for this, it's excellent. Years ago, we had a standing communications committee, and I'm so happy to see it revived. I had one quick question, um, are we on Twitter?
We are not on Twitter, so Twitter is actually one of the least, um, the statistics don't really support us being on Twitter, I don't have numbers at my disposal, but in terms of the number of people on Twitter is actually one of the lowest social media platforms.
Oh, no, I, I'm just very happy to hear that, I just was curious, is it yes or no?
Our, our Facebook launch has gone very, very well, I mean, we're well beyond launch at this point. Um, we've had great engagement on Facebook, people love getting glimpse into our classrooms and our schools, whenever we have a lot of pictures or videos to share, people love that. Um, you know, we, we've talked a little bit about whether or not at some point we would wanna dabble in Instagram, which is closely linked to Facebook, and has, uh, you know, there's a lot of synergy there, and again, with, with Mark Russell and Caitlin and all the images that we have in the district, that would be a logical place for us to go next if we chose to go deeper, but Facebook's been very successful for us.
I know that the environment changes so rapidly, in the couple of weeks since we've done this plan, we now have threads which didn't exist 45 days ago. So, you know, we know that Rebecca is going to monitor this, and if it's deemed appropriate, we'll probably move there, but we're not in a hurry to make a mistake.
Good, thank you.
So I have two questions. One is, um, I think what's really kind of neat about this strategic plan is that it gives us, um, a way to kind of think about it in terms of the budget. And so, um, because I was, in some of our initiatives and what have you, um, I was noting, um, that, you know, I wonder how, um, you know, and I guess this goes more towards the, the two of you is how you take these, like our communication specialist, and how do you take, you know, any subscription that we would have to do to whatever? Um, how do we, how do we take that, um, to ensure that we, that, that we have in our budget embedded our ability to be able to pass along that, that communication, that was like, that's what hit me. Um, and, and only hit me because I read through all of your stuff, and I was like, okay, so how are we gonna do this? And how do we sustain, and how do we sustain it, and so how does that get embedded into the, into our budget? So that, um, it's part of doing what we do. And then the second, and I think you alluded to it, Phil, is I see this as the Grotton Public School District's communication plan, born out of the committee of the board. But what, what does this mean for the board, um, in terms of the subcommittee? Like how, what is the role now of the subcommittee?
Take deep breath, I didn't think I have deep breath. Our next step that I've discussed, Phil, is to discuss, okay, we have all these possible things we can do. And we only need 12 times a year, and we don't have a minimum time, we're assuming, but we need a hundred. We know things are gonna pop up that we can't imagine, so I can create a form that I could show it to Phil. And at our next meeting, I'll get this to you, and the next step is, I don't know, I, I mean, just a simple form, six things, say, what are the six things that you think are easiest to reset this for us? And what do you think of the six things that are most important that we should be doing? And see that we, if we can have some A's match the same ones, and if some, pick a couple of things that we can work on. And the first thing we've done, we, in favor of doing two of this, is Kim made a referral about developing documents that can be used to meet a variety of needs, like before, it's already articulated. Uh, one was trying to attract some of the many people who are coming to work in Grotton, who are actually living in Grotton, settle here, uh, possibly an issue, and so our, Kim mentioned something for the other stakeholders, so I've done some research on that, and shared that with Phil. Uh, but our town and our city websites have nothing about our students. The chambers of commerce have nothing about anybody's students. The economic development office of the town has nothing about our students. So I'm seeing this document, if we can, we actually can, but if we can come up with a single document that can have some multiple, multiple audiences, and maybe if we need to save a little note that's aimed at the brokers, that's aimed at the new business, potential business owners, I've one document that can do a positive promotion of information.
And I'll just add to that, in that, you know, I don't think we're looking at this, this is not a, a list of tasks for the board for, for the communications. Um, I think similar to the curriculum committee I can speak to, since I'm on that as well, is that the expectation will be periodically throughout the year, we'll hear from principals as to how they're carrying out this plan, um, you'll, we'll hear from central office, we'll hear Rebecca, of course, as to the different, you know, and then they'll be reported out to the board. You know, so this is a nice document that will guide the communications committee in monitoring its.
Outrange to an effort.
Its efforts, yeah.
I even see that you could add a few questions on a culture climate survey that goes out to all families related specifically to this, so that's another way to help with this.
Right, and communication, I just, you know, communication was identified on all the building surveys, the important, and that has come up in the past, um, we did our communication survey, gosh, probably about two years ago, but a lot of what came out of that has been in work since then with the website and other things that we're working on here already, um, this really captures both a lot of the work we want to do, again, speaking to elevating and expanding communication, as well as some of the work that's been in the works for a little bit now, but we'll come to fruition within the next.
And I also wanna remind people that we're talking about internal communication as well. So I think it's important, you know, um, like, I mean, the surveys are a great way, we get information from the community, but they're also a great way to get information from our teachers and from our students. We reported out this year often on our, our, our coffee chats were another way for central office to bridge communication with buildings, because that was identified a couple of years ago as an area that needed to improve, um, and so we will continually try to, uh, come up with ideas on how to include that as well, to make, uh, I think to make the board as approachable as possible for teachers who, who want to come in the community, and just like central office, you know, we don't want, you know, we're always trying to find ideas as to how we can bridge those, um, and, you know, any kind of gaps. So it's for internal initiatives.
It, I mean, communication is really part of everything we do, it's part of every department, every, there really is a layer of it, whether internal or external, everything we're doing, um, in some way.
I, I'm gonna recognize Dean, Andrea, oh, yeah, Andrea, I'm, Andrea's sitting next to me. Your hand is still up, so I don't know if you have. Your hand is still up, so I don't know if you have another question, but I am going to recognize you.
Can you hear me, Rita?
Yes, I can hear you. I didn't mean to have my hand up. Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's, that's, yeah, my, my point was my department. Okay. The only thing, my questions are using the term stakeholder and stakeholder. But I first began to see that word outside the traditional usage of someone who owns shares in the company, for example, or literally a stakeholder, the old fashioned sense of word. I've seen it, I've seen it used in broader and broader maps. It's handy of use. When I think of stakeholders, it's not a business, of course, but I can't be guaranteed. Capital, capitalist stakeholders, not. Where the stakeholders are formulated. But the kids are in the middle. Okay, kids have families, parents, legal guardians, et cetera. Faculty is here to enable the learning, the support, the statutes, what the faculty has. That's that's it. Those are the real people involved. When I think of the media, when I think of those, the public figures, pretty popular category, and literally a parent, people from organizations, other civic leaders, et cetera, I'm thinking of people who may have interests. They're curious, who should be communicated to, but I would not put them on the same level as say, parents or students or faculty. In other words, so when you use, I'm just a question, how do you use the term stakeholders? When we identify stakeholders, I do not want to put this all in perspective, media, for example, or, you know, mayor of the town, et cetera, that would not fall on the same level as the parents or students or faculty or any staff. We should communicate out to them, but I hesitate to use the term stakeholders all in the same group because you could very often just sort of muddy the distinction there. At some point, you know, everybody becomes a stakeholder, everyone's like, some interest. You'll recall when we had one of the media people here last month or shoot very concerned, especially challenging challenges that the library material by some small group running around the country trying to gang close off libraries, school libraries, shelves. Although I'm sure those people think of themselves as stakeholders, because they have an influence. Children's education, we wouldn't count them as stakeholders. I want to stick to the actual community.
I I think that that's, that makes a lot of sense. And maybe, I mean, you guys can think about that. I just, just for a point of reference, I have been practicing since nineteen eighty something.
Nineteen.
Yeah, not to, oh, for practicing and stakeholders is a is a sort of like a a non-public general term, but to your point is maybe there's could be some listing about what that looks like. Instead of just using the generalized, generalized term, but for right or for wrong, social service, education stakeholders.
I do law for for business, if we love to use capital terms, we don't miss a part.
Right. I think it's great. I think that's a good point. Thank you.
I thought initially it was really beneficial. And then I said, oh, that opens up an entire. I get your points. There are differential levels and hopefully, hopefully we revise them.
And my only, my last thought is the concerning part about the fact that there is not synergy between the Board of Ed and the town of Gotten, we service the same groups of people is whether if there is a communication, you know, and this might be something to kind of start to think about in in January is 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 there a is there a communication committee on the town council? Where they could be meeting on a more regular basis with the members of the Gordon Bank Communication Committee, where we we're, I mean, we did the liaison, but that's but, you know, and or maybe, you know, or to look at it, maybe it's the communication committee kind of takes head lead on the liaison to make sure that there is some some places, maybe we don't need to add an extra meeting, but we need to add a place where, in a space where all of the people get together. And we tend to share our stuff because I think we're we're very active. And so the I think the public school tends to take lead in those liaison meetings. But is there a way to kind of be more mindful around making sure that the stuff that's happening in the public school is is given to the given to the town so that everyone can kind of boast about what's happening in the in the district and vice versa? I mean, you know, what's building, what's happening, though, what's what's happening?
My knowledge, the town lessens our communication. You cut the places my mind. Stipulating that that's correct, that doesn't stop our community from figuring out whether the correct path to proceed to engage them would be to speak to the two mayors and express interest and having when see what they might want to do.
And I believe.
That's, that's, that's not, we've got no discussion.
We talked about legislation too. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think liaison meeting is happening in October, early September. And we could do, you know, two-way communication or three-way considering this, the city of Gotten, so three-way. Because we were also taking a look at how do we think about legislation that's coming down the pipe that's impacting the public school, but also impacting. Want to become a registered like that. Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Let's begin. Nice job. Well done. Well done.
Show the pause for the circle there.
I want to say personally, this is really driven and I totally respect Rebecca's pride students. She has really gone above and beyond. And I want to say, you know, if we had to start a war, just we definitely give you a go to start.
I just want to say that you are an invaluable member of this team. And I just want you to know how appreciative we are of your hard work and how how much this has really taken up a lot of your time and some of your time that's not been, you know, that's been on your own. So I want you to, I want to acknowledge that, make sure that you're aware that you put a lot of extra time into this and to say thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'm I'm very passionate about communications and it's been, it's been a collaborative effort. And you know what? I want to give a shout out. William, Dr. Gorgon had attended a cave conference last year, I believe, and I had gotten a copy of the communication plan in Mossburg and put it in schools. And we did use that initially, which really became a great spark starter for all of us. We sort of took some of that and then really started to make it our own and craft it and figure out what what we liked, they talked about, and that that really helped inform a lot of what we put forward. So we do have a little acknowledgement to them as well, but I think in the end, it really did become our it was a good model. And, yeah, it was a good model. Almost like a thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask. You would like to go. Let's ask you.
Anything else?
Not on this, a simple act of legislation for a brief.
Legislation?
You raised the question of legislation, education, legislation last year, a couple of our legislative in November or December, to ask what it was we wanted them to be in the coming summer season. And I think we were kind of patching wise because we've never been asked before, but we didn't have time to react to give them the agenda. Susan, we have an agenda for a minute seconds to get that together and we can have deep and ready. So let's be ready to get into the drawing.
Which is what we are hoping to accomplish in the liaison meeting is for us to kind of, as a group, kind of talk about our the people who represent the city, the town, and the board, how do we, you know, what are some of the concerns or some of the issues that we have? All right. Anything else? All right, I'm moving us on to Susan. Discussion and reflection of the 2022, 2023 school year.
So as you know, a superintendent's goals are really based on some work from Connecticut Association of Board of Ed, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents. And they really are some major categories, six categories. Number one is all about student achievement, and after a pandemic, it's first and foremost on our minds to really accelerate learning and and, you know, help close gaps and you know, get kids in a really good place with their teaching, with their learning. The second is at leadership, having a leadership, having, number three is organization and management. Four is community relations. Five, I think, is of utmost importance to me, and it's our Board of Education relationships because it's our work together, our leadership together that makes things happen. And then six is personal and professional qualities. So I always like to look back at a year and look at each of those goals, but also think about what's our top 10 that we've done together as a board and superintendent and administration and the team. And definitely, the communication plan was in the top 10. Not Letterman's top 10, but Gotten Public Schools' top 10. And so that was one of the things that I felt like really came to fruition. It's something that's been on our minds since 2016 to kind of revise, and you guys really made it happen. And I feel like with this plan, it's so comprehensive that, like, you're right, that all those strategies we will be able to fit all kinds of communication. So, you know, the good initiatives that are happening, but also the challenges that we face and making sure that the board knows, you know, all that is happening, and so does our community. You know, one of the top things is always about student achievement, and we certainly saw growth from, you know, our first really public data piece, and we looked at it all year long. I looked at it with the board. You asked great questions. There was a lot of two-way communication on, you know, what to do next, and the Connecticut State Department of Education recognized two of our schools as schools of distinction. And that was Northeast Academy and Charles Barnes. So that felt like getting back to what we've done before in the past. Also, the Board of Ed worked so diligently with me with, you know, really, one of the first budgets that I kind of saw from beginning to end, you know. Mike had helped me with one of the first ones, and we got it going, but this one really was on the part of business manager, this admin, central office team, and our board. And I would say we we turned every page, we looked under every cover, and we tried to be as efficient as we could possibly be. And, you know, we'll continue to do that. And also in search of grants and and ways that we can help. I think that Shannon has probably five, six different grants that she's working on now, and she's put a couple through. And, you know, the right to read, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars out there to help us with the science of reading, and we're going for it. So just knowing that you know, we're trying to find every possible way to help support with some of these unfunded mandates. So whenever they're going to be able to give us a grant for these things, we're going to go for it. I would also say that in that process of the budget, one of the biggest items, ticket items, was negotiating that bus contract. And thanks to Sam Kilpatrick, who, with his building of facilities, he also has transportation under his hat and really working hard to negotiate so we wouldn't be faced with a million dollars out of the gate that first year to kind of streamline that increase. The other thing with our diversity, equity, inclusion vision goal that the board has taken on, one of the ways we actualize that goal was listening to our students who were saying that they wanted to see more diversity in those high-level classes. Why don't more kids like me take these classes? And so we did an outreach. And we did a policy that was revolutionary that really said a child wanted to participate in a course. We wanted them to have that opportunity. So, and we would support them in that. So I couldn't be more proud of this board and some of that work that was done. We have had the shifting of the balance with reading and really looking at the science of reading. And I'm really excited to share with the board some of the work that's been happening, even over the summer, with book talks and the professional development, and even with realizing a spoken sequence of phonics, K through three, that I'm very proud of. And I think will make a big difference. Even using new, some new materials, like University of Florida's UFLI Phonics Program, which is really well received by a lot of people, including many of my families who have children who are dyslexic. And then, of course, we continue to roll through with the tridemic this year and, you know, looking at people's health and well-being physically, socially, emotionally, it was really important to be responsive to me and, you know, really try to give people room and and areas where they could really kind of get through some of these challenges and help support them in that. I would say number eight I took as social emotional learning was a priority goal so that principals, you know, had teachers really looking at that in their classroom, they took a look at that in their building for their teachers, so really looking at that in a comprehensive way. And then there was the mentor program. We hit our 25th year. And, you know, with COVID and and some of those things where we didn't have people in the buildings as much, we really were losing that program, but I feel like it was really revived in one year. And I see that we'll continue to have a revival. And that's very exciting. And that can also fall under communications. How do we get more people involved in that? And I think it's a real benefit to our students. And then, you know, summer work, I'm always so surprised to see teachers come out after a very long, difficult year and come out to support their students. They support them with summer learning, with camps, with summer school, with tutoring. They come out to do book talks and curriculum work and professional learning. And you would think, you know, some people say teaching is the 10-month job, but not in this district. I don't see that at all. I really see it as a full-year job. And yes, people get some vacation time and they need that vacation time. But I do see our teachers really and our administrators really pulling together and getting some wonderful work accomplished and for the benefit of our students. So that was kind of my top 10. So I just wanted to share that with you all, as I have, and the community, and just reiterate that it's our work together that, you know, is causes the leadership team and helps us get things done together. And, you know, not just looking at accolades, but questioning and asking and seeing if we can do it any better. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
The bus cutoff was this year?
Yes.
Like, it feels like.
It's all in one year.
A lot, lot, lot happened.
And the buses were running very smoothly compared to the year before, if you remember.
Yeah, I didn't have any way to. That was really nice.
Yeah. I I think what I appreciate I think I've seen it is your top 10 is like, how much has happened in 180 days? And like, you don't like, I think, like, sometimes I just feel like I'm like, what's next, what's next, what's next? And so it's really nice to have that broad scope of all the things that have happened under your leadership. Thank you. And yours, all of yours. Appreciate it. Teamwork. Any other questions or comments about that?
I would take a motion for a general.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now completed with our committee of the whole meeting. Thank you, guys. Yes, you can take a 10-minute break. Yes. How about, how about if we, we're going to meet again at seven? Yeah, so at the five minutes. Thank you, Mark. Caitlin?